August 20, 2025, regular meeting of the Holland City Council. I'm Mayor Nathan Box and I'm calling the meeting to order. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Byrd. Vreeman.
Here.
Raymond. Corbin.
Here.
Sol. Rowan.
Present.
Shay. Schultheis.
Present.
Mayor Box.
Present.
We do have a quorum.
Wonderful, thank you. We're going to begin this evening's meeting as we have for many years, first with opening prayer, followed immediately by the pledge of allegiance, and I would invite you to join us if you're so inclined.
Please pray with me if you'd would. Lord, thank you for the start of another school year. A new, a time of new beginning, a time of fresh faces, a time for learning. Lord, help this council listen and learn and speak wisely with one another and make decisions for the people that you have asked us to serve. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The next items on our agenda are consent agenda items. These are items that are considered to be fairly routine and have been reviewed by council members as part of our council packet, and they will be enacted in one motion unless a member of the public or a member of council asks to have an item removed from the consent agenda, and then it'll be placed in its regular order in the regular agenda. But before I ask if anyone would like to do that, Brenda, would you please review the consent agenda for us?
Yes. Item 4A, excuse the absences of council members Byrd, Raymond, Sol, and Shay. 4B, approve the minutes of the August 6 regular meeting and August 13 study session. 4C, a grant of utility easement with Holland Public Schools for Holland City Fiber Project. 4D, a grant of water and sewer easement for 470 Cleveland Avenue, the Ottawa Town Homes. 4E, the South Washington Avenue, Michigan Avenue corridor plan. 4F, text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance with final adoption September 3, 2025. 4G, claim filed against the city. 4H, a charitable gaming license for Park Theater Foundation, adopt a resolution. 4I, resort liquor licenses for Saber Cubano 2, adopt a resolution. 4J, award the bid for the Grascope Road Storm Sewer Culvert Linings Project. 4K, award the bid for Grascope Road Retaining Wall Project. 4L, set a hearing establishing residential housing district per Act 237. 4M, set a hearing considering a residential housing exemption certificate per Act 237 for Heights of Hope, 1061 Abbey Court. 4N, ice park sponsorship agreement. 4O, the fiscal year 2026, beginning of year budget amendments. 4P, quarterly investment report. 4Q, May financial reports. 4R, approve participation in Purdue National Opioide Settlement. 4S, approve the purchase of two Chevy Tahoe Police Pursuit Vehicles. 4T, a public art advisory committee application for installation of outdoor sculpture Strong Hearted Woman. And 4U, declare items as surplus.
Thank you, Brenda. Is there any member of the public that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none, any member of council that would like to have an item removed from consent and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none there either. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the consent agenda?
Move to approve the agenda as presented.
Moved by Vreeman, is there support? Support by Schultheis? Any discussion? Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Vreeman.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Rowan.
Yes.
Schultheis.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item on our agenda is item 5, public comment. Under the Open Meetings Act of the state of Michigan, we provide the public the opportunity to address council at our ready, regular meetings, at our study sessions, and at every one of our board committee and commission meetings. We do have guidelines that we ask you to follow, however. One is when you please step to the microphone, we ask that you state your name and the municipality in which you live, because it's important to us to know whether or not you are a resident of the city of Holland. Each person is allowed to speak for five minutes. You have, it's up to five minutes, you don't have to take the whole five if you don't want to. Up to five minutes, and there are three lights on the dais. There is a green light, a yellow light, and a red light. Green light means you're doing well on time. Yellow light means that you have one minute left, and the red light means your time has expired, and we are strict about that. You can speak about any subject that you would like to, but remember that this is one-way communication. It's an opportunity for you to be able to address council on those things that you think are important, but we don't answer questions or engage in discussion at this time, but if there is a question that staff can circle back to, we'll try to do that after the meeting. Having said that, is there anyone here who would like to address council at this time? If so, please come forward. And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Anne Henriksen, Zeeland. National April Faith Month Action Organization desires to join with the Holland American Legion for a fundraiser to repair the Colin Park bandshell stage. At the beginning of summer, I reached out to the Legion's Director, Scott Vandenberg, inviting the band to do a fundraiser to help repair the dilapidated band, bandshell. This is what the letter said. Dear Ms. Doc, dear Director Vandenberg, Leanne Michela and Stephanie Walters, to those in the Holland surrounding area, want to thank you for your excellence and faithfully bringing music to us in the summer tradition in the Colin Park bandshell. We are honored by your public involvement and performance integrity. We are the National April Faith Month Organization Incorporated. Both Mrs. Chelle Zuniga and I have chaired this organization for three years, expanding opportunities outside church walls to include all of Holland. Mayor Nathan Box declared each year the National April Faith Month in support of our faith community. The official April Faith Month has been entered into the U.S. Congressional Record 2022, so it's nationwide. 2025 NAFMAO Incorporated hosted the National Day of Prayer at the Civic Center Place with 400 in attendance. We love God, music, and country. 2024, we had a worship concert at Colin Park bandshell stage area. We noticed the structure was badly deteriorating. Our organization would like to honor Mr. Vander, Henry Vanderlinde's memory, Holland's music man, by having a fundraiser to repair the amphitheater. It was dedicated to him by his wife in 1999. I reached out to their son, Dr. Scott and Marie Vanderlinde of Grand Rapids, to inform them of the bandshell's condition. We would like to honor their family. We are hoping you would consider joining us in this fundraiser with, before this summer ends. Best regards, Anne Henriksen and Chelle Zuniga. Mr. Vandenberg contacted me by phone. He had been in touch with Andy Kenyon, Department of Parks and Recreation. Mr. Vandenberg reported that due to the delays in city business with Patnose and the Stone Company, the city could not move forward to repair the bandshell. I reported that at the city council meeting in my public comment. At the end of that same meeting, Mr. Van Beek, city manager, instructed the council the funds would be allocated in 2027 budget. That did not sound like what Andy Kenyon said. The next Legion concert, I personally reported the sudden change in city plans to Mr. Vandenberg. At that point, I gave him a Vandenberg American Legion Medal and its significance. I had hopes we could have coffee and discuss with transparency the city's grasping its draws, controlling policy that discriminates against people of faith and their message. The irony is that the majority of the people applying for the stage are Hispanic. The city of Holland Council had been asked by the public to change the bandshell policy to include all people groups listed in the Anti-Discrimination 2020 Ordinance. As it stands now, any church or religious group who applies to use the bandshell is declined because the city will not provide a sponsor. National April Faith Month Action Organization Incorporated relies on the Bible and the goodness God provides. The reasoning is that Holland Legion brings goodness to their audience. Why not turn this dispute to good and present the city with a financial gift to help restore Mr. Vanderlinde's family's dedicated bandshell in the face of the city of Holland's denial stronghold? Go to Colin Park and read the plaque in front of the bandshell stage. It'll warm your heart. Mr. Henry Vanderlinde's love for music, God, and country, so do we. We stand in goodwill for our community. Interesting, Mr. Vandenberg has not answered my request or invitation for coffee. He may have forgotten, or perhaps someone here has contacted him. If anyone would like a Brandenburg Medal and its amazing significance, email prayunited28@gmail.com.
Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Next item on the agenda is item number nine, written petitions and communications. In addition to providing the public the opportunity to be able to address council in person at our meetings, we do also have an email address where you can send an email that will be received and read by all council members, and that is publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Again, publiccomment@cityofholland.com. When we receive those in between our regular meetings, we then accept them into the record at our regular meetings. We don't read them out loud, but we do accept them into the record. We do not have any this evening, but I did want to make sure that the public was aware of the email address, publiccomment@cityofholland.com. Next item on the agenda, item 10A, adoption of the 2021 International Fire Code. Mr. Van Beek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I believe Captain Tenny, am I correct? All right, he gave me the, is going to briefly give you an introduction to this. I would call this an important, but really an administrative item, just aligning and adopting the International Fire Code, but Captain Tenny, why don't you come up and maybe give a brief introduction, but then be available to answer any questions? And good to see you back and healthy, sir.
Thank you. Clean shaven as well. I mentioned earlier, I had to shave off a few years, so, thanks, Mr. Van Beek. Mayor, council, tonight, we're going to ask you to consider some amendments to our Chapter 11 of the city code. That is, as you're aware, that section of the city code deals with fire protection. And in there, our ordinance dealing with the fire code is, is part of that document. What we want to do tonight is ask you to consider adoption of a newer version of that code. Currently, we're under the International Fire Code 2012 edition. We're looking to update that to the 2021. Some things to know about that, it is a companion code to the city's building code, which is the state building code that's adopted by reference. We too will be adopting the International Fire Code by reference. That means, what that means is that we're taking a model code that has been developed by consensus group, the International Code Council, that is shared across the United States, Canada, and even some other places in the world. So, we're using that as our document, we're going to adopt it by reference, that then becomes the city fire prevention code. What we'll find is that does track well with the building code, that's why we're doing that. The city is under the, in fact, any jurisdiction within the state of Michigan is under the 2021 building code. The 2021 fire code, or the International Fire Code, is a companion document, and it provides maintenance provisions to the building code. So, understanding that today we have a new constructor, we have a new building, change of use or modification of building, the Michigan building code needs to be followed. Once the building's commissioned, they receive a certificate of occupancy. Our responsibility is to go in and enforce a, or have a code to enforce the provisions of the building code that were already installed into the building. So, that is our goal tonight. There are some mod, or some minor amendments to that, as you will see in the packet. We did include those, so we're asking you to not only amend the fire code, but accept some amendments to the code. With that said, I do have Captain Brower and I've got Fire Marshal Grundeck here tonight. If there are any questions of a technical nature that you want to ask, I'll bring them up. But in a nutshell, like Mr. Van Beek stated, that this is a, it's a pretty administrative function of the department. We're just trying to get up to date. There are some new provisions in there that will help us manage some of the batteries, lithium ion batteries, as far as protection and fire protection goes. As a city, we don't have a lot of installations called energy storage systems or ESS. We don't have a lot of those yet. It sounds like there might be some townships that are dealing with that issue right now, but there are provisions in this code to address those moving forward. So, that's all I've got.
Thank you. Any questions for Captain Tenny? Mr. Schultheis?
Thanks. Reading through the action request, it bulletizes some of the significant changes. Can we give maybe a couple of examples of how it does or does not impact, like, ongoing business? Like, one of the notes is framework for inspection and permitting of mobile food vendors. So, like, what's the current state and what does this change for those that do mobile food?
Fire Marshal Grundeck, he's had some firsthand experience with that, and he is actually responsible for applying the code in the field, so I'll have Brett cover that.
Brett Grundeck, Fire Marshal. So, regionally, there is a setup for mobile food vendors and a licensing. It makes it so that if a food vendor goes from place to place in the region, that they are able to have a fire safety license that they, they have there. That doesn't exist in the 2012 edition of the fire code. And so, locally here, we're a bit behind, whereas municipalities like the city of Grand Rapids, the city of Kalamazoo, city of Muskegon, they're further ahead with managing some of those things. This, the code brings us up to where we should be in terms of that.
So, is it?
It makes it easier, yeah.
Well, I'm trying to understand what is different for a mobile food vendor who wants to do business in the city of Holland? Is it they not, like, they used to not have to get an inspection for fire, and now they do, or?
Yeah, that's correct, yep.
Okay. And what's the mechanism that they're informed of this? Is it through their normal permitting process of being able to do business in Holland?
Yep. So, locally, that'd be the goal, right? Is, is to provide that framework to be able to do that. The municipalities that have moved up their fire code to more recent additions, 2018 is where that became most prevalent. Code changes every three years. And so, 2018 was when that became incumbent upon a lot of municipalities to have some sort of framework to be able to do mobile food vehicle inspections. That was in the wake of, well, a lot of frankly fires with mobile food vehicles. And so, the code came around after the fact to address a lot of those issues. And the state of Michigan, MFIS, which is the Michigan Fire Inspectors Society, they've developed a checklist that fits within the most recent code, and then that's what is now been done to inspect and enforce all those things with those particular vendors.
Mr. Van Beek?
Maybe puts an example on that, Brett. I believe, say a food truck is in Grand Rapids on Monday night, and Muskegon on Tuesday night, comes to Holland on Thursday night. They complete that checklist, and they don't have to complete it in three different jurisdictions. They have that checklist, and then if we would look, because we're all using that same framework, you don't have to go through and go through the truck and check that, they just show you the checklist from one of those entities that they've completed that inspection, and then they're good to go.
Correct. And, and that badge, that license that they get, or the confirmation of that certification is equivalent in all the jurisdictions because we're all up to the same code.
Great, yeah, thank you, I appreciate that. The second question is more of a validation. So, for the item associated with carbon dioxide and carbon dioxide detection requirements for occupancy, do I read it correctly that there's a grandfathering in this? And if, if you have current systems in place, they're fine, only if you go to update, is there a new requirement?
It depends, what are you trying to get at?
I'm trying to understand what the, the functional changes in number seven. Whoever this applies to, do they have to go out and do something different?
The biggest one is carbon dioxide detection, and it depends on by weight, how much carbon dioxide you have in the building. So, if you are a restaurant owner, for example, and you have greater than, and forgive me, I don't know if it's 100 pounds or 500 pounds off the top of my head, but if it's greater than that amount, then you would need some sort of carbon dioxide detection. So, there was a different carbon dioxide detection. Carbon dioxide is typically used in carbonated beverages, things like that. And so, if there's a leak in the building, which we have a lot of facilities or restaurants in the city where, and I found them going through inspections where they don't have carbon dioxide. Presently, with the 2012 code, it makes it difficult to require them to have carbon dioxide detection. It's a health risk, it's a safety risk, and the new codes do require it. And that factors into the existing buildings, that if you are an existing building, you would then be required to have carbon dioxide detection in addition to carbon monoxide detection.
Great, thanks. What's the period to become compliant? Once this becomes effective, how long do businesses have to?
Once the code becomes effective, or once the, once an, once an issue is recognized, or once the code becomes effective?
Yeah, I'm probably not able to answer the, or ask the right question in this.
No, you're all right.
So, it sounds like some people, some businesses might have to make adjustments in carbon dioxide monitoring.
Potentially. And it's going to depend on how much carbon dioxide you have, or how much is stored in the building? Most businesses, go ahead.
Keith's a good translator.
Yeah, I, I think what's going to happen is like homes, this doesn't impact a home situation. This would be more type of commercial businesses that we're in more consistently anyway. So, it's probably not something like, we adopted this and all of a sudden somehow people need to know, otherwise they're going to get in trouble. It's a situation where we're out there doing our regular types of inspections and updates. And then if we recognize something that should be updated, then we'll work with them at that point to make, to do the update.
Beautifully stated. I like it, yeah.
My job is to interpret sometimes.
Yeah, I think that's a concern that we have on a regular basis every time we adopt a code. The code does have specific provisions, and it'll call out when it is applicable. You know, new and existing, it'll say that. So, and again, I believe the CO2 requirements are stated that way. The code also has a section on, how do we apply this code to existing buildings? And there's a term, you know, we talk about, what is in existence, what's legally in existence at the time of adoption of the code? Okay? If it's legally in existence at the time, it's been approved, it's been built, yeah, a lot of those provisions do not apply. Retroactivity does not apply. So, the code does help us walk through that, and I think as an application, as we go and apply the code, we're very cautious of the impacts on our consumers and our community and what that means. You might see extended timeline, hey, this code just took effect tonight. Technically, that provision, if the code is adopted tonight, I don't know if we put a 30-day window or 90 days, but I'm looking at Vince on that one, or the city attorney, rather, Mr. Duckworth.
Right, it's just the typical ordinance effective date after adoption and publication.
Okay. So, technically, the minute that occurs, people are in violation, but it's up to us to enforce it. And again, I, I think our mantra and our method is, we're into compliance, we want to see people safe. We understand that it does create hardship, so we work within the, within the realm we're provided to, to make sure that we don't create unnecessary hardship. So, hopefully that, at a broader eye aspect, I think that's where you're going with some of the questions.
Great, thank you. Yes, Mr. Vreeman.
Thanks for your work on this. I was, I'm questioning, and then the first one, again, to our resident lithium battery producer. Is there in progress of renovating, expanding, changing? Is there anticipation that that's going to have a big impact on where they're at today with code?
Um, it depends, because a lot of that stuff, when we talk expanding, that's covered under the building code, right? And so, as they add buildings, the, the big benefit there is a lot of that's covered in the newest edition of the building code. Where the fire code helps us, again, with it being a maintenance code, is going through and doing inspections on a lot of our existing buildings in the city and finding places where lithium ion batteries are stored, and then making sure that if they are stored there, that it's the proper amount, and that there's the proper suppression system that is configured for that type of commodity. It's a, it's a high hazard material, so it has to be protected by a certain type of suppression system. And again, the code modifications allow us to do that a lot more specifically and target those type of things. Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Appreciate it, Mayor.
What is the pleasure of council in regard to this item?
Moved to approve as presented.
Moved by Schultheis, is there support?
Support.
Support by Vreeman? Any discussion? Seeing none, Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Okay, Corbin.
Yes.
Rowan.
Yes.
Schultheis?
Yes.
Vreeman?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda, item 12, Echo 6.1, Human Resources Resolution Authorizing Membership in the Western Michigan Health Insurance Pool. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. A team effort that we have on here tonight, and also a presentation by our proposed consultant. So, myself, Jen, Jennifer Orm, and Lynn McCammon have been working on this, but I think Jen's going to give an introduction, and then Chris Glass is here to go over more specific elements of the pool and outline what it is that we are asking and recommending you to adopt tonight. So, Jen, take it away.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, city council members. You may remember from, I think it was late June, we had a study session about this very topic. We refer to it as the pool, but it has a much longer name, as Keith just explained. So, we'd like to have Chris Glass from Gallagher speak to you tonight and just give a little more information about the pool and about how it can save the city of Holland and BPW some money. So, just a quick little recap from what we discussed at the study session. The city of Holland and the Holland Board of Public Works has had a self-funded insurance plan for the last three decades. What that means is the city pays all of the insurance claims for medical and dental as they hit up to a certain point, and then we have what's called stop-loss insurance at $130,000 or more. So, any claim that's below $130,000 comes out of our own funds, which we manage very carefully, but we do have to purchase that expensive stop-loss insurance, which is a fixed cost that the city takes on every year to protect ourselves from those large claims. So, we've been meeting with the folks from Gallagher who operate the pool here in Michigan, and we've discussed what those indirect and fixed cost savings could be for the city and BPW. And as you may recall, every year I get up here at open enrollment and discuss that we pay 80% of the insurance premiums for our employees that are covered by our insurance. They pay 20% as long as they're wellness compliant. And so, this is a pretty significant cost to the city and to our employees. So, we take it pretty seriously. We try to make sure to control those costs as much as possible, and we're always looking for new ways and ideas that we can continue to save money. So, we are contracted with Priority Health currently for our stop-loss insurance. They also are our admin, and all of our claims and our payments are coming through Priority Health. So, if we were to make this change and go into the pool, our employees would actually not experience any change. So, we could still keep Priority Health, Delta Dental, all of our current benefits. Hopefully, the only change that our employees would experience is a cost savings. But we can keep our plans exactly the same, and at some point, if we wanted to change from Priority Health to, let's say, Blue Cross Blue Shield, we could also do that through the pool, and that's what we've done in the past with our insurance broker. So, Gallagher is the insurance broker for the pool, and so I'd like to introduce Chris Glass from Gallagher, and he will speak to you in a little more depth.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Appreciate the opportunity, and the first thing I want to start out with is, the city staff has been just tremendous. It's clear they're running a great program as it is. When we started conversations with them, as we've been having conversations with many entities across the state, it really was to say, let's take a look and see if this makes sense. They've been very upfront, providing information, helping provide consultation to us about your program, what the needs of employees are, and we began this conversation roughly six months ago and bringing it to you today. So, really, as we think about what is the pool, right? The context is this, when you're talking about insurance, it's about risk mitigation, right? And when we have the pool itself, it was eight school districts that were now 20 years ago. One of your neighbors, Ottawa Area ISD, was one of the founding members of the pool. They said, can we do health insurance differently? Is there a way that we can mitigate risk, save dollars, and reinvest those dollars either in employees or within the organization itself? Those eight entities still persist in the pool today as members, and it's demonstrated that this model has really worked. When they started the pool, and it's important to know, only public entities in the state of Michigan by law of Michigan by law, by state law, are eligible to participate. Gallagher does not own this pool, it's owned by the members that are a part of it. Gallagher sits as the insurance consultant outside of it, helping make sure the day-to-day operations, the members' needs are met within the pool itself. Now, when they began it, they said, what are the three pillars that we want this program and this pool to have? Member focus, how do we make sure there's great insurance there that the needs of the employees of our public entities across the state that are a part of it are being met? Value, how do we make sure from a cost perspective, we're providing great benefits but at the best value possible? And then the third is trust, which gets into transparency. How do we make sure our members understand what's going on in their programs, they're making great decisions on behalf of their employees? Those three principles together really is what makes the pool very special. Who's in the pool now? So 20 years ago, those eight entities started together. We're now at the point, given the volatility in the insurance market, a little bit that Jennifer spoke of, other entities across the state have said, what does it look like for us? The model is working. We're now at the point where we're over 230 entities across the state. It's a word of mouth largely, in which organizations will hear about the pool and they'll say, hey, let's take a look, doesn't make sense for us to be able to join. The fantastic part of it in the 20-year history, there's been three entities that have left the pool, there's been two of those entities that have returned. You don't see that in the insurance world. There's transitions all the time as entities try to evaluate programs and understand where they can have some efficiencies and cost savings. And what that speaks to us is the model really works and really serves our public entities well. We always provide a full membership list, but kind of narrowing in on what we have here in West Michigan, you have a lot of neighbors that are already part of the pool. The county itself entered the pool last year. Holland Public Schools have a number of their employees that are already in the pool. You have the City of Hudsonville. You have Holland Public Schools and others that are, actually, every school district within Ottawa County itself has some employees or segments of their employees within the pool population. While it started as a school pool, it's a great fit for the municipal entities as well. And it was around 2012, Tim Klunder from the City of Zeeland reached out and said, hey, this looks like a great opportunity. I know right now it's only been schools that are a part of it, but what do you think about allowing municipalities to be a part of it? And the answer that the executive committee and the membership agreed is, absolutely. If the model can help our municipal friends, we're all in this together as public servants. We welcomed in the City of Zeeland, and now actually municipal groups are the largest growing group within the pool population, which is pretty exciting. Rate history. At a high level, Jennifer mentioned indirect costs. We always talk about when you're putting dollars towards an insurance program, how much of it is actually going towards claims and paying for the care of members within it. Anything that's a cost outside of that is what we call an indirect cost. What we've done as an analysis, we said with the city in partnership, let's take a look at your program as it sits for 2025. Let's say claims are claims, whether it's in the pool or your existing self-funded program, and what would the cost savings be if you transitioned to the pool? Because our indirect costs are far less than what other program models have. What we came to the conclusion of with that analysis is roughly 9.31% savings or around $400,000 to $500,000 that is able to be mitigated by making this transition for employees. As Jennifer mentioned, keeping the same plan, same priority health, no disruption in doctors, same plan designs for this transition to occur. Why does it matter? Year over year, our value proposition is if we can beat trend of what the other options are out there, self-funded, direct with the carriers, fully insured, whether it's Priority Health or Blue Cross Blue Shield, that's providing values, value for our organization and employees. Why do we keep beating trend year over year? Because our indirect costs are lower, we're leveraging our size with the membership in the pool to be able to drive advantages in lowering those indirect costs. Rate protection, this is an important aspect of it as well. In any given year, when you're on your own in the insurance world, if you have a number of claims that are above a certain amount, you're going to have stop-loss premium that increases. You're going to have claims that increase. What the pool has said and what the members have long held is to say, we do not want volatility on a large budget line item in insurance programs. So instead, what we're going to say is any given year, an entity can have a significant cancer diagnosis or a significant illness that needs treatment. That doesn't mean the next year they're going to have the same thing. And so rate protection really provides those guardrails to where once the average rate of the pool is set for each year, a member cannot have more than 3.75% above what that average increase is, no matter what their claims experience is. And why that works is because we're spreading risk across 25,000 employees in the state of Michigan. You're able to then be able to mitigate some of those costs that are there. Service side, this is near and dear to our heart. We want to make sure our public employees and organizations are taken care of. The pool has now over 20 members that are on the Gallagher team that work directly on the pool. They field questions on a daily basis from the organization itself or from employees who need to know about their insurance, ways they can be supported. So I want to reiterate to this group while we're here today, service is one of those key elements of what we provide within the pool membership and the reason why retention continues to be so high, along with the value proposition that I spoke of. So I'll be brief in those remarks. Just appreciate the council taking this up and happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Great, thank you. Questions from council? Yes, Ms. Rowan.
Thank you. I don't so much have a question as a comment. I just want to say, we were briefed on this at the end of June, I recall, and it was a really good discussion that we had. We had lots of opportunity to ask lots of questions and thoroughly vet this opportunity for the city. Of course, I can't remember any of the questions that I asked back then, but I know that we did really have an excellent opportunity to explore, hear a lot of feedback about how well it's working. Obviously, the safety of the plan as it functions for the employees of the city is paramount for all of our concerns. But I just wanted to say, I'm, I was very impressed with the presentation that we had, and I'm excited to support this, and I wanted to just congratulate the, the city HR department for being innovative, to look to new solutions, to kind of cut some of those costs, and obviously finding ways to have good healthcare and have it come at less of a burden to both the city and the people that utilize it is a wonderful thing. So thank you very much for all of your efforts, both inside the city and in your organization. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman.
A question, and it might be for Jennifer. With the anticipated savings, I know typically we see a 1%, 4%, 2.8% increases throughout. What would you anticipate on a, a plan for the coming year or for staffing to anticipate?
Sure. So yes, last year I think our increase was 8.17% across the board for all of our plans. I can get confirmation from Lynn, but I believe we budgeted for fiscal year 26, 10%. We're just starting to kind of crunch those numbers. We'll definitely be under budget, I can tell you that much. But I don't have those rates. That's typically something that I'll bring to council in October so that we can have our open enrollment session in November. But we are working with Gallagher and the folks at the pool to figure out what those rates will look like, but that's not been completely confirmed yet. Good question.
Mr. Van Beek.
Yeah, and maybe, because this is a really important thing that we do, so just a couple add-ons. The action that we're taking, asking you to take tonight is to adopt a resolution that would allow us to join the pool. And then also, basically, a business association agreement, because Gallagher doesn't own the pool, the members own the pool. And the first action, basically, we become a member and then we sign an agreement where Gallagher becomes our agent, if you would. And then budgets are weird, right? Because our, our fiscal year budgets are July 1 to June 30, but our health insurance year is calendar year January 1. So the year that we just started, July 1, is covered by half of a year that we already know exactly what the rates are. But it's a different plan because it's a self-insured plan. And then under this proposal, as Jen talked, we are working through exactly what those rates will be. We'll bring those back to you for later action. And then those rates actually go into effect January, halfway through our fiscal year in January 1.
Other questions for staff? Yes, Mr. Corbin.
Yes, I know we also talked with this at the Holland Board of Public Works as well because they're, we're going to be separate in nature, right? We're going into this kind of pool separate but into the pool together collectively. But one, I guess back to Jen, have we, was there a, a question had to be addressed to the unions on this by chance to, to make sure they were comfortable?
Yeah, I have kept both the fire and police union presidents up to speed with this possible transition, but everything in the contracts are more about the actual plan design. So that'd be deductibles, co-insurance, copays, and which plans we offer. So we can, you know, just like if we were to switch to Blue Cross Blue Shield, that wouldn't be going against what the collective bargaining agreement states.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure there was no issue there. And then there was some discussion of a balance that would be left in that account because of the fact that we contribute, but also the employees contribute as well. So leaving that there as a, a buffer in the, in the event some costs were not anticipated, that we, we do that for a period of time, so.
Two pieces of detail that, glad you asked and happy to answer that transparency. So yes, not only are we getting the rates, but we're also working through, along with the BPW, because we're going to go in separately and, and figure out what those respective rates are, which is a lot of data to go through, so a lot of work that we're in the midst of, and we'll bring that back to you. And then yes, there is, because we've been self-insured, there's a pool that we use those funds to pay our self-insured claims. Now, there's a run-out period, so I, I think from a finance staff, as Lynn is smiling in the back row, we know that there's money there, but we are not anywhere close to saying how much money's going to be there, what we should or shouldn't do, one hurdle at a time, but at some point, there will be money to pay all those, pay out those claims, and then we'll come to you at a later date to make a recommendation on, on what to do or not do with that money. But it won't be something that we sweep into another account or anything. I mean, it's set up for this purpose, for employee benefits.
Right. It wouldn't go into another general fund account. It would be for health insurance and benefits.
And that's what I want to provide some assurances to the employees, especially that, you know, some of their contributions are going to be safeguarded by us. We're going to make sure that that is done because we want to make sure that we keep those rates and costs down.
Right.
Part of that is using that fund to maybe offset that in the future, so.
Or, or I just want to be clear, or to keep it to provide ourselves flexibility for the future also. So that's why, just stay tuned. We, we need to figure out how the run-outs work and then kind of understand, and then we'll do some analysis and make recommendations at a later date.
Correct.
Other questions for staff? Great, thank you both, appreciate it.
Thank you.
What is the pleasure of council in regard to this item?
Moved to approve the resolution authorizing the membership in the Western Michigan health insurance pool.
Moved by Freeman, is there support?
Support.
Support by Schulzeis? Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
The, the resolution is the, was the motion, there is also a business associate agreement. Would that be by separate motion or is this part of the same motion?
It would make it part of the same motion then.
And is Mr. Schulzeis willing to second that amendment to the motion?
Yeah, support to amend the motion to include the business agreement, the business associate agreement.
Wonderful, thank you. I'm glad that you had your rubber tools of order on your desk at work today. All right, any discussion? I, I just want to echo what council member Rowan said. Thank you to staff for all of the hard work on this and being proactive. It's one of my favorite things about being mayor is knowing that we've got an incredible staff that is doing great work, not only to make sure that our amazing employees are covered and have the benefits that they need, but also looking out for cost savings for both taxpayers and for the employees. And I think that's a really important thing and a, and a great opportunity for us to be able to say, we're actually doing something that might save some money in the future rather than just having to look at paying more and more for these kinds of services in the future. So thank you for that, really appreciate that. Brenda, would you please call the roll?
Rowan?
Yes.
Schulzeis?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item 13, communications from the city manager. Mr. Van Beek.
Just two things, quick tonight. One, just recognize a lot of staff that was here tonight that are both is either still here or, as you can see, I think council, you all know this, but quite often we'll have staff that is here dependent on what happens on consent agenda or not, and if their item is on consent agenda and it goes through, then they go on with their night and probably go home to their families. But just appreciate staff always providing that support and doing great work leading up to and following actions that you take, so. The other is that several of us had the opportunity, Holland tends to be particularly in the summer a location of conferences, and the Michigan Economic Developers Association was in town for three days, let's call it, and had many opportunities, different staff members to give them tours of the ice park, to support tours of Lake Shore Advantage and the NEX Center, to do walks downtown and point out what we have going on downtown, to entertain some site selection, national site selection companies that are always working with larger corporations or mid-side corporations to take a look at maybe where businesses and other opportunities can locate around the world. And I can say definitively, the mayor was there at several events too, that we put our best foot forward and they always, people usually say nice things about you, but I think it was a genuine and an enthusiastic support for what we already know about our communities. So that was a great opportunity for us and just something positive that happened in town just this week. And that's all I have, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Van Beek. Next item on the agenda, item 14, appointments and communications from the mayor. Just one thing from me this evening. I am lucky enough to live right next to where our wonderful ice park is being constructed. And for those of you who don't follow me on social media, I was out there at, I didn't get there till about 5:00 in the morning last Wednesday morning, and the cement flatwork crew had already been working for an hour or more to do the second of the major pours on the rink and the, and they actually did the pond last Wednesday morning and a section of the ribbon of ice. The curling rink has already been poured. I saw that they were out there today doing some area near where the garage doors are going to be going, kind of in the little theater area. And if I understand correctly, next Wednesday morning, in the wee hours of the morning, there may be another pour that's taking place. It is very, very quickly taking shape. If you look closely, you'll notice that the fence actually moved a little closer to the road this week because they're starting to do landscaping out there. They're going to be starting, I'm sure, going to be laying bricks. I'm starting to see snow melt tubing going in. So as a city resident or any one of our neighbors who's looking forward to skating this year, it's getting really exciting, really fast out there at the ice park. So if you get a chance to drive by on Sixth Street, take a look. Great work, great project, super excited about what's going to be happening out there this fall and this winter and the years to come. So thank you for everybody who's working hard at that, especially those crews that have been out there in the 100-degree heat. And I, I think, Mr. Van Dyken, don't you have a rule that if the, if the, the temperature gets above a certain, or the heat index gets above 100 degrees, that an ice cream delivery may be made to the crews out there?
Yeah, anybody that says money can't buy happiness has never delivered ice cream through, on a job site when it's 100 degrees.
So, well, well done, well done, thank you. I know that, that, that keeps the folks that are out there working hard, making sure we've got a great ice park happy, and I appreciate that. And I know you're out there all the time as well, Matt, so thank you for that. And that is all I have this evening. Next item on the agenda, item 15, appointments, motions, and communications from council members. Anything from council members this evening? Seeing none. I do have a question for staff before we go into item 16. Is it anticipated that we might be taking some action following the closed session?
I'm going to give you an answer and a bonus, if that's okay.
All right.
Sure. No, we do not expect to ask to take any action afterwards.
All right.
But actually, we would like to up, provide an update in closed session, not just on one, but on two instances of purchase or lease of real properties.
All right, thank you for that. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to enter a closed session to consider the purchase and or lease of two properties. Moved by Schulzeis, is there support?
Support.
Support by Rowan, looking for a roll call vote. Support by Rowan. Looking for a roll call vote on that. Brenda, when you have a moment.
Okay. Schultheis?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Rowan?
Yes.
And Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Wonderful, thank you. We'll take a few moments for the chambers to be able to clear out so that we can enter closed session. And as we just said, we are not anticipating any action following this. The video feed will stop, but we won't be taking any action following that. The only thing that we'll be doing following the closed session is adjourning our regular meeting. So, thank you.